I want to welcome everyone to our January 17th work session. We do have a few items to discuss and I think some items that are quite interesting to many of our public. Mr. Manager, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up, we have a discussion about water billing issues. I know that this is a popular topic in the community. We've done a fair amount of research on this and we have some recommendations for your consideration. And so I ask Mr. Jurgens, our Director of Public Utilities, to prepare a brief presentation and give you some suggestions for moving forward. Mr. Jurgens.
Thank you, sir. I noticed he said "brief." I'll do the best I can. First of all, I want to just start out by saying that for our customers, this is a very, very, very large and important issue. When you get a water bill that's more than what you expect, it can be shocking, it can be an incredible source of stress, and frankly, for some of the customers I've talked to, it's the number one source of stress in their lives when we're having this conversation. We have that discussion with all of our customer service staff so that they understand that these people, they are our neighbors. These folks live just down the street from me and from my folks and from you all, and you may be our neighbors at times. So we treat this with the utmost of importance and incredibly high standard of care. It is equally important to the utility because our water and sewer utility is self-funded. We don't receive taxes. We are funded by the revenues that we generate from our customers, from the sale of water and from the service we provide with taking care of and disposing of the sewer. So it is equally important both directions. And so we strive for fairness in all respects. And when it comes to a water leak, for example, on a customer's side of a meter, they own that water system. It's their system that has a leak. We recognize these happen, and so we have a leak adjustment policy I'll go into later. So it's very important that we treat them fairly and equitably and understand that sometimes folks, you know, we have a problem. I've had some problems. I'll show you one of my own examples. But we also know that, recognize that our revenues all come from our customers. So when we give a break to one customer in the form of a leak adjustment, which is totally appropriate, we recognize that all of the rest of our customers are paying for that. So their neighbors are paying for that adjustment that we provide by reducing their bill by the cost of the amount of water that went through. So that's just kind of a general fundamental. This is really, really important to both sides of the equation, and that fair and equitableness is what we strive for in every customer interaction. Secondly, we talk to every customer that calls us. I won't discuss any individual bills with anybody but the customer. It's not appropriate to share their personal information. That is very personal information. So when we get a call from somebody who says, "Well, I'm representing so-and-so," unless the customer has said you are authorized to speak to this individual, then we just can't discuss details or specifics. So when you see responses that I may give either in writing or anything that can go public, I won't mention specific billing information, dollar values, things like that, unless the customer has given authority to do that or has stated that publicly in a public forum themselves. So we are always very cognizant of our customers' privacy. With that, please feel free to ask any questions. While this isn't rocket science, it's not intuitively obvious to lots of folks. And so, please, conversation rather than just me standing here blabbing like a talking Basic discussion sequence. We're going to talk about billing trends, talk about the water meter, how it works, the water billing process, the most common causes of high consumption in a water system or in a household. All of our conversation today is really focused on residential systems and residential water meters. Separate, commercial meters are larger, they're different, and so that's really not part of this conversation. Our adjustment policy, we're going to cover toilet leaks in detail because we hate them and they are the most insidious, the most common, the most difficult to detect types of leaks there are, and bless their hearts, nobody in my family will ever hear them. I've had toilet flappers caught and running full blast, and my kids will walk right by and not have a clue. That's the upstairs bathroom, so unless I'm walking close to the stairs, I may not hear it. That's just the most common source of water loss in a residential system. And then we'll talk about the way forward in the future. So billing trends. Busy slide. I went back a lot of years, went back, I think, to 2016. The blue bars are the number of meters that we read. We read around 435,000 meters a year, or we make meter readings around 435,000 times per year, and this is residential only again, reading obviously the same meters roughly six times a year. So we do this a lot. My meter readers read an average of 300 meters a day. They are on a person's property generally about 60 seconds. They don't clean meter boxes, they don't clean the grass around meter boxes, they pop that meter box lid up as minimal as they can, as they have to, to be able to open it, see the dial, stick their hand in, hopefully with a glove because there's a lot of black widows in meter boxes, they love that moist environment, reach in, clean off right above the dials, enter the number into their handheld computer, close the lid, move on to the next one, they're there 60 seconds. So when a resident or a customer will say, "We've been watching and we haven't seen them," they're really fast, because when you're reading 300 a day, you don't have time to not be fast. Their job isn't to clean them or anything else, just to read the meter. So the gray line on this chart, that reads off to the right-hand bar or the right-hand numbers, and that shows the number of rereads that are automatic or tab, what we call a tab reread. This is our high-low report. When my meter readers bring that handheld computer and they put it in a docking station, it downloads all of the information from the meters they read that day. And then it says, "These flag is being high," or "These flag is being low," or "These flag is being not read at all." There's times when we can't read one, somebody parks a car on it, it's under snow, it's a lot of rain and we can't get into it, whatever the reasons are, there's times when we can't read a meter for some reason. Sometimes if I have a new reader, he may not be able to find it. So it kicks out all of those highs or lows that are out of norm. And that rate, if you look at that right-hand column, is less than 4% on every single month for the last six years. If I have a meter reader who isn't reading 99% accuracy after he's been here about a year and we've been training him and he still can't do it, then they find another's place of employment. Their job is to read meters and to read them well. That said, with 99% accuracy, we are human, and 99% accuracy, while it may get you an A+ in every class you've ever taken in life, it still means we have around 4,500 misreads per year. So we're not going to ever claim to be human. I'll go through the process of what we do when this happens, when these numbers come back in a few minutes. Let's talk about the meter itself. I love water meters, they're kind of fun. You know, it's kind of my business. I've got a cutaway right here in front of me that you won't be able to see, but we've worked with Heath's folks so that they can zoom the camera in on it. A fundamental of a water meter, it's a closed system. Water comes in one end, it goes out the other end, and there's nothing else that has any influence on this meter. The meters we have in the ground right now don't have batteries, they're not hooked up to electricity, there's nothing else that influences them. There's only one source of force that can cause this water meter to spin, and that's water flowing through the meter. And in 31 years in the business, I've never seen a meter spin unless water was flowing through it. It just, it takes energy to make it happen, so it can't, the odometer, the dial, can't go around in circles unless water is flowing through the meter in that closed system. It's not possible. And looking at this meter, and I'll be happy to show you this up close and personal at any time your heart's desire, it'd be my pleasure. It takes force to spin this, and this meter's style is called a nutating disc. It takes energy to make this disc rotate, and this disc rotating is what causes the dial to move. So that's why we can stand completely with the belief, with the statement, with the fact that this dial only moves when water flows through the meter. Okay, so looking at the slide, we see the different consumption readings. The white numbers are full consumptions, and a consumption, we use consumptions here, a consumption equals 100 cubic feet of water. I have no mental image of what 100 cubic feet of water is. I have no clue. I can picture a gallon. I buy gallons of milk. So that equals 748 gallons of water, just to put it in a normal person perspective. I'd love to change them out, but we've got that many meters and our entire system is set up for consumptions, it would cost way too much to change it out just because I like gallons instead of consumptions. But one consumption, 748 gallons. The right-hand dials, the black ones, those are to the right of the decimal point. We read them every time, but we do not put that portion on the bill. The bill only concludes that part to the left of the decimal point. But since it's an odometer, it keeps spinning when it's being used, when water's flowing through it, that reading just carries over to the next one anyway, next reading anyway. So this is the same meter. These photographs were taken one day apart, looking at the two readings, 0549.22, 0549.03, which means there were 0.19 consumptions used in that one-day period, which is 142 gallons. And that's pretty normal usage for a 24-hour period. The standard, the industry standard is that each person, 100 gallons per person per day, but that also includes some higher-use industrial, residential, commercial, that's a system-wide average rather than an individual home average, so this is pretty reasonable. Water meter tests. Customers will ask us to test their water meter, we're happy to do so. We have a test set, test bench, down in our maintenance and operations office on Executive Boulevard. Now, we'll do it on the customer's request, however, comma, and this is actually extracted from Section 7888 of the ordinance. We'll charge $25, but if the meter proves to be out of AWWA standards and tolerances, we will not charge them, we will refund that $25. If it's within tolerances, which almost all of them are, if it's within tolerances, then we do charge that $25, and that's to cover the costs of my crews going out, removing the meter, putting another meter in during that temporary timeframe, taking it back to the operations center. And we invite every customer to come watch us while we do this test, so they can observe the test, confirm it's their meter, and, you know, see how it all works. We're happy to teach our customers. That's what this all is, is education. If a meter is found to be out of standards, out of those AWWA, American Water Works standards, then we will adjust the bill to the average that the customer's established. That's even if the meter is reading low, which is almost every time, like 99 out of 100 times, if it's out of tolerance, it's reading low, because as the hardware in this meter wears, it wears down like the tires on a car or the parts on a car, and it will actually allow more water to flow through for each rotation. And then also, per the ordinance, the customer needs to pay their normal bill while we're doing this analysis. Sometimes the analysis may take a while because we want to make sure that if they're having an issue, if they're having a high reading, we want to make sure, if there's a leak, that it's been fixed before we do any kind of an adjustment. We want to make sure the problem gets solved. Average residential bill. Now, if you want to, we can dig into the actual bill itself, that's not really the specific point of the conversation here today, I'm happy to do it at any time. Trying to be brief, I'm not planning to unless you would ask me to. Average bill. Generally, on average, residential household, a single-family residential household will use about 5,000 gallons of water per month. We bill approximately every 60 days. I say approximately, sometimes it gets shorter, sometimes it gets longer, there's holidays, there's weather, there's, people get sick, they might catch COVID and be out for a week, whatever it may be, so it generally averages around 60 days. That 10,000 gallons per billing period, because we bill every two months, equates out to 13.37 consumptions or 100 cubic feet, which turns into, using this year's rates, the bill that you see to the bottom right, with approximately $230. The bill has three components: City of Chesapeake water charges, City of Chesapeake sewer charges, and then HRSD sewer treatment charges. And yes, this came from a bottle fill station up on the second floor. I believe in my product.
Mr. Jurgens, you said we could ask questions?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So just a little, before you leave off of this slide, the numbers at the bottom of the bill on the right, top right-hand corner?
Oh my God, you can see that.
I can see it. That's, is that the?
This is better now.
Is that the water usage?
Yes, sir. The bottom right-hand portion where it says "usage," and if you can see it on the slide up on screen, it's bigger.
Pardon?
If you can see it on the slide.
I can see it down here. So you've got 9,724 gallons, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So that is the water consumption?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
This is a, and I've, you know, obviously blackened out all the personal information, but this is an average bill from one of an actual customer.
Mr. Jurgens, can I ask a question too?
Please.
What is the average lifespan on the meters, the water meters?
That's a great question. Because of the nature of the meters, generally the recommended life on a meter is 15 years. However, comma, like a car, it's both a mileage issue as well as an age issue. Some components will age out, some components will mileage out. You know what I mean? So I drive a 2001 Mustang, but it doesn't have a lot of miles because it was often the third vehicle. I don't drive it on long distances. So those components that mileage out on my vehicle have lasted a long, you know, a lot of years. But generally, meters are good for 15 years. We, our meters are a little, on average, older than that. And actually, when we had a review a couple of years ago, about four or five years ago by the internal auditor, one of his recommendations was, "You need to catch up and replace your meters because they are reading low." I run about an $85 million a year business. If my meters are reading 1% low, then we're losing money for the product that we're selling. So it is my responsibility to keep my system, including my meters, current.
I thought Councilman Newell was going to follow up, I'm sorry. About the 15-year span, how, this is a 15-year span, but for the average customer, is there a system that the homeowner might know that their meter is being changed out, or do we automatically change them out after about 15 years?
So we do have a meter change-out program. It is actually behind right now because we are moving forward into replacing all of them with smart meters. And so at this point, we're not doing routine change-outs. When we change out a meter, we do notify a customer when that meter gets changed out. We have to turn their water off for about five minutes to do that, and we notify customers when that occurs.
So, but you do notify in writing?
Yes, ma'am. We actually put a tag on their door.
And if your meter, if you haven't had a tag in 30 years?
Well, then either it blew off or you may have the same meter you've had for 30 years. Now, I don't think you want me to go out and replace it because, quite frankly, because the parts wear, when we replace meters, we see consumption go up virtually, every time, because it's reading 100% accurate as a new meter. Whereas as they wear out, they will read low, just because of wear and tear.
Okay, that was going to be the question. So if it's an old meter, it probably reads low instead of high?
Old meter, you would be, yes, you would be paying less, you'd be using more water than the meter would register, because as the meter wears out, it moves slower and more water will flow through it. Yeah. You're welcome, ma'am. So the water billing process. My troops go out, read the meters, one of 300 that day, put the readings in, download it, then our system automatically reviews the readings, and it throws out what I referred to earlier as our high and low report, everything that's abnormally low or everything that's abnormally high. Abnormally high is defined for a residential customer as 20 consumptions more than their 12-month average. Now, that's, at that point, we put eyeballs on every one of those highs and lows. And what the eyeballs do, for example, is if a customer has an irrigation system, and so their summertime usage is high every summer, then we don't bother notifying the customer because it follows their pattern. If they have a swimming pool and they refill it, you know, they let it drain out over the winter and then refill it every March or April or whenever, and that's a common pattern, then we won't notify the customer of a high reading because it's normal for them when we see that. So the normal is compared to the account history, and we check every one of the meter, the readings that's on that high and low report, because human eyeballs looked at it. For normal bills, we then send all of our data in a batch file to HRSD Herubs, and then they use our information to calculate their portion of the bill, and then they produce the water bills to go out to our customers through Herubs. For a high bill, if it is one of those high numbers, and I've gotten two of these letters in the past 14 months, I'll show you that bill, or I'll show you that pattern when we get to looking at what leaks do to somebody's water bill and consumption. If it's unusually high, we automatically send a supervisor out to reread the meter. It's not a regular meter reader, it's a supervisor, more experienced, more skilled, they grew up as meter readers, and they go out and they reread the meter. So if you take the 1% error rate from the first reading and the 1% error rate on the second reading for those high bills, it is very, 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 very uncommon, but it does happen, that we would then have two errors on the same meter. Again, we're human, and it does occasionally happen. There are times we will send a bill out that will have an error read. We processed one of those not too long ago. The beauty of the water meter is that it's an odometer. So like your odometer, if you make an error in reading, it doesn't have any effect on the next reading, it's just dials. So if you make a mistake one time and reread it, it's easy to correct. It's not a cumulative error that occurs. And in looking at all of the accounts that we've had calls from lately and that we get calls from all through our tenure, all through the year or whenever, we always go back and reread the meters and verify the accuracy of those numbers.
Mr. Jurgens, may I ask you another question?
Sure.
When you're referring to when we read and reread, is that at the time the bill is issued, that we go out and we reread for the high bill?
So, no, it's actually, what happens on those that we're going to send somebody out to reread on, we pull those bills from the batch.
Okay.
We don't send those bills automatically until we verify the reading and make sure that we didn't make a mistake in the first place. We want to make sure we send the accurate information to our customers. So that's why we pull those from normal processing, physically send a person out to reread that meter before we send the bill to make sure it's right and make sure we didn't make a mistake. That way, we catch almost all of the mistakes that our initial readers would make in their initial readings.
Okay. Do we have a threshold that would alert you or your office that this is unusually high and maybe we should look into it?
So, yes, the threshold is down in that third bullet, the third sub-litre of the third bullet, if it is 20 consumptions higher than the average for that, the last 12 months for that account.
What does that dollar amount equal to approximately?
This is public math. That's scary.
That's okay, it's approximate, it's an approximate.
So after we send that person, the supervisor out to reread that meter, if it has high consumption, then we'll reread it. If it is confirmed to be accurate, then we will come back, we will generate a letter that we send to the customer, notifying them that they have high consumption. That letter will get to them before the bill does. So we're notifying them that they have an unusually high reading, and it's done by mail. If the reading is, was, there was an error in the reading, then we come back and we enter the right amount into that billing process, and if it's back to normal, then we just send them the normal bill, it's just delayed by about a week to a week and a half. So if it's the normal amount and we made a mistake in reading the meter and we read it wrong and read it high or low, then we will correct that reading and send the bill out that way. That way, we can ensure that the correct bill goes out to the customer.
I have a question. Before you move on, you said that you bundle all of the data and send it to HRSD, so they generate the paper bill?
Yes, ma'am.
But you also said they use our calculations for their portion of the bill?
They use our meter reading numbers, because we are the ones, our meters are the only tool to measure the volume that flows through the meter, that flows through the house and then flows into the sewer. So they use our meter reading as the basis of their portion of the bill as well, just like we do.
So if there's an error, high or low, then that naturally would fall over to an error in the sewer billing?
That error, that mistake in the number would carry through to all three components of the bill: water, city sewer, and HRSD sewer. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clear that up in my mind. Thank you.
So I looked at lots and lots of different places, and I looked at 30-some years of my own experience, the top 10 reasons for a high water bill. Number one, barring none, is the toilet. Now, I'll look, we'll look at toilet leaks in detail in a minute, so I'm just going to move beyond those. But leaking faucets, we'll also run some calculations on how much of a leak will cause, what effect it will cause on a bill. My deputy discovered last week she had a water leak under her house in her PEX pipe in the crawl space. She discovered that because there was a wet spot in her garage. She doesn't have any idea how long it'd been leaking, and when she gets her bill, she has no idea what it's going to look like, because unless you can see the spot, you don't know if you have a leak. That one fortunately did show up as a spot. The toilet leaks disappear, they go right down the drain, so you don't know they're there. Irrigation systems, we don't have a lot of here. A leaking service line, I'll show you the different ways that, you remember that flow detector checked, the little triangle in that first picture of a water meter? If that is moving, then that indicates there is water flowing through the meter. It doesn't indicate a leak, but it indicates there's water flowing through the meter. Conventional wisdom says, "Turn off everything in your house, and if that's moving, then you have a leak." Generally, that's true, but your ice machine, if you have an ice maker, there are some things in your home, if you have a humidifier, there are some things in your home, part of your HVAC system, if you add humidity to your HVAC system, there are things that will run without you manually doing something, so it's not a perfect indicator, but it's correct in almost, in most cases. Old outdated fixtures use a lot more water, of course. Seasonal impacts, this is one people often don't think about. In the summertime, you have kids home, you have, sometimes they'll go out and play outside, you might wash your car, there's a lot more uses watering plants, whatever they may be, there's a lot more use in the summertime. Here, it averages about 20% more than normal during summertime consumption versus wintertime consumption. We had one, one customer came in, it was a couple, a young couple, they came in, they couldn't understand their water bill, they were convinced that we had made mistakes. At that point, we actually had enough, we had one smart meter we put in, I don't have any more on the shelf right now because supply and demand is such that the supply chain, I can't get any more for another, about four more months. But we put that meter in there, it turned out that when they had replaced their hot water tank and put in a larger hot water tank, that changed their consumption. And there was a bath being taken every day, and we could show that the water consumption spiked every time that bath got taken. And that spike accounted for a doubling of their water bill, just from taking a bath every day. So buying a new, it was a Jacuzzi tub, this is where you're looking at me funny, you kind of looked like my dog with his head sideways there for a second.
I was wondering where the tree is.
So, so buying new fixtures can cause a problem, can cause a change in your patterns and your consumption. Water softener systems, that's actually another insidious one, because they have a drain. And so if a water softener system has a problem and has caused, has a leak in its system or has a continuous flow, it will often dump off to a drain, and you don't know it's happening unless you specifically put eyeballs on it, and so your bill can go up a lot, and there's never a wet spot, there's never an indication. And then, of course, the 12th item is the water meter mistakes. And then of course, the 12th item is the water meter mistakes. Toilet leak math, flapper seeps. Okay, so you flush your toilet, it does its business, it fills up for a few minutes and then it stops. If water is draining from either the, through the flapper or over the top of the, of the, tube, then the water will be draining continuously, but it's very, very slow. So the water coming in won't run, it will just gradually drain into the bowl, drain out of the bowl and disappear. And then in a few minutes, and I used a quarter a gallon a minute here as an example, but it can be all over the map. And then in four or five minutes, the water will turn back on in the restroom and be filling that toilet again. That ball sinks down and when it hits its trigger point, it'll start the, it'll open the valve and the toilet will start filling up again. It'll fill up for about 30 seconds and then it goes silent. So during that five minute period, for four and a half minutes, there is no evidence of a leak. During that 30 seconds, there is. And then it cycles forever. And I swear, there is a gene in the human species that causes teenagers to not ever be able to hear that. I have six kids, I've replaced every flapper in every toilet in every house I've ever had, most of them about once every three years, and my kids can walk right by that and never, ever notice. So again, that upstairs toilet, it's an invisible leak to me because I don't spend a lot of time up there. The cost of one of those leaks is an additional $497 per billing period. So when we identify a high reading, we will go back out and we will drop leak detection tablets. One of the best ways to find that is to put food coloring or a leak tablet, some kind of dye in your tank. If it shows up in your bowl, you know that it's seeping. The problem is the flappers don't always leak. Sometimes they will sit perfectly, sometimes they won't. It's not consistent. It's moving hardware, it's inside water, it's in that chlorinated environment. If somebody uses like a chlorine tablet that goes into their tank to help clean their toilet, that makes it a much more corrosive environment, that'll wear everything out much faster. I would never recommend doing that. I clean my toilets in my house sometimes too and I would rather clean the toilet than have that eat away because that, that, that chlorine in that detergent pack will cause it to wear away faster. Now let's talk, the, the, the largest toilet type leak, now four and a half gallons per minute is for an average toilet that was built 10 to 12 years ago. It's a little bit less on newer and it's twice that much on older. So the range, I'm using kind of averages for the amount of the, of the leak, but that's if that blue flapper that you see on the screen, if that gets hung up by the chain, for example, how many of us have seen that before? Probably everybody. So if the chain catches, if that one little link in that chain catches under that flapper and holds it open, it will flow huge amounts of water. Four and a half gallons a minute for as long as it goes. And if you happen to go away for the weekend like a friend of mine a few months who called me, he said, David, how's my water gonna bill, bill gonna be? I said, you better start saving now because it's gonna, it's gonna be ugly. That'll be $125 a day or more if that happens and it stays open. But once again, that's, water is very turbulent, so that water moving constantly through that tank can at times cause that flapper to go back down, so you never know what happened. You just see the big bill and wonder what in the heck happened and then you call the water company and we try to see how we can help. That can be a $9,000 increase to your bill from an average toilet if the flapper stays open for an entire billing period. That rarely happens. But if you're living in one part of the house, if you're like me now, I've only got two kids left in the house out of the six, so there's part of the house we don't go into very often, then it can run for days and days. Okay, so how a leak impacts a bill? This is an example of a toilet flapper. This customer submitted a leak adjustment request or a water bill adjustment request and said that their plumber replaced three toilet flappers. You can see the progression as the consumption gradually increased. When they red the, or replaced those three toilet flappers, you can see in the detail to the right-hand side, that's the last four meter readings, the two really high ones. And then we took two more several weeks apart, one consumption for each several weeks apart. This household doesn't use very much water most of the time, but they had a much larger bill during those two billing periods when they in fact had toilet flappers that were leaking. And the plumber replaced the toilet flappers, solved the problem. When we do an adjustment, and I'll talk about our adjustment policy in just a minute, but this is what you can see, we adjust the green bar and it's not going to be exact on here, I didn't measure everything to the nth like an engineer normally would, sorry. But we adjust 50% of the above average water and sewer bill. So if the, if the volume was, if they normally have 10 consumptions per bill and then this bill was 30 or these two bills were 30 each, then the, the utility would absorb 10 of those and the customer absorbs 10 of those additional consumptions. So we take the overage and we split it 50/50, we go halvesies. It seems fair, it seems reasonable, it's their system that had the leak, they own it, they, they operate it, they maintain it, we can't know what happens. So that seems like a very fair and reasonable. That policy is also very consistent with the region and is, is actually consistent pretty well across the country. We're a little more generous in one aspect than, than other places than, than where I used to be. So let's talk about a different type of leak. This is actually my bill, last, however many billing periods that is, about a dozen billing periods, I had a pool leak. So last year I was putting more water and I was running around 20 consumptions, my average is around 12 or 13, kind of normal now. But we had some events where the Great Bridge High School soccer team came to my house, my son plays there, and so they came over for a dinner and then they were going to swim. We had, had a party. And so I had to top off my pool. As I was filling the pool up to make it clean, that's the bar, that high bar on the left. Then the bar that you can see from July 1 of 2022, the one this year, the one's very high, that's half green now, that was when I had the pool liner replaced and solved the leak. Between those two, I didn't refill it, I just let it drain down. Now, the reason you only see the, the green bar on the second leak is because at that point, that's when I repaired the problem, solved the problem that was causing the high consumption and that's, I applied for an adjustment. What I didn't realize, and I feel really stupid, but what I didn't realize earlier was that my earlier bill was actually larger, where I was repeatedly topping up my pool, that cost me more than completely draining it and filling it up one time. And I felt like an idiot because I, I lost myself some money that way. I donated more to the utility, I guess. But we don't want to adjust somebody's bill if the problem still exists because then we're not going to adjust it again and it just makes it worse for the customer. And they are the only ones that can fix their system, we can't. So our adjustment policy, I've really kind of talked about it, again comparable to the policies in the region. If they provide evidence of a repaired leak, a plumber's bill, a receipt for the parts, photographs, whatever it may be, we will make an adjustment one time every three years. Now if somebody's plumbing leaks every six months, you know, I'm not sure that it's the rest of our customers that should be paying for their plumbing that leaks every six months. And that's where we came down with the three-year timeframe. It just, there's responsibility there of ownership. If your roof leaks and roof leaks and roof leaks, then you want to fix your roof. And so, so that's where we come in with the one leak for a repaired leak, one every three years. And what we do, as I said, was we credit 50% above the average usage for both water and sewer. Now, if the leak is in the yard line or somewhere else where we're sure it doesn't go down the sewer, we will, we will adjust off 100% of the sewer because it didn't go down the sewer, it didn't incur any costs for us, therefore it's totally fair and reasonable to not have them pay any of the sewer portion because it didn't go down the sewer, there's no reason to pay. We do that same thing with pools, we'll adjust off 100% of the sewer.
All right. Okay.
I was going to ask the question about the pool, I don't have one, but you just answered it.
Cool. So we also do what we call an unidentified water loss. We'll do one of these once every 10 years. If they have no idea what's wrong, they don't do any repairs, they just had an anomalous spike in their bill, we'll do one unidentified water loss adjustment. We do one of those every 10 years, this is in addition to the repaired leak adjustment and for that we make the same adjustment, 50% of higher than normal consumption for both water and sewer. That's the one that in the Midwest I had never heard of before. And then I mentioned pools, I think I've covered that well enough. So after we do an adjustment to somebody's bill and they still have a higher than normal amount they have to pay, we will work with our customers, we understand that this can be an enormous financial burden. We work with our customers, we'll talk to them, we'll, we'll figure out how to make this work. Our norm, our standard is that we will require an upfront portion, typically 25% of the past due or the overage amount, and then we'll spread the rest over equal payments so that they come out over a period of, depending on, depending on how big it is and how it works with the customer, it can be six months, 12 months or 24 months, but we'll go up to 24 months for spreading out those payments for that additional, that high bill amount. And again, this is always a conversation with the customer. And again, this is a very consistent policy with the rest of the region. So working to make it better, how to go forward. So the, one thing that will really help, and I heard, I heard this mentioned last council meeting, go to monthly billing. I want to, and we're planning to, we're working towards that, we've been working towards that for several years. The, it's, it's not just a matter of hiring more meter readers and doing it. Every aspect of the process would have to have double the staff for double the readings, double the bills, double the everything, double the computer time, double the computer storage, actually taking our bill batches and integrating them into the IT system of when we transfer those bills. We have specific windows for those bill transfers, it's a lot more, it's just a lot more than most people would realize. So what we've been working towards and what we're planning is when we will change out our residential meters with smart meters, AMI being automated, automated metering infrastructure or smart meters, then we will convert to monthly billing. So we're in that process, we've already placed orders for smart meters this year, we're starting that replacement. We started first quite frankly, we're more than halfway through our commercial meters and converting those to smart meters to where we can read them. First of all, we're going to do it by radio read from a vehicle driving nearby and sending and receiving signals. Later we'll move it to where we're hooked up through the IT cable system, the, the fiber optic system, to where we can get live readings and ping them and get readings every, you know, every frequency that we determine. Now the more frequent you get the readings, the faster the battery dies because then we will have a different type of meter, it will be electronic, it will have a radio system in it with a little antenna on top of the meters. And so, once we convert our meters to smart meters where we can read them more frequently and, and the accuracy is a little bit better, you still get some misreads, some zeros, some no reads, then we'll convert to monthly reading and what that does for our customer, one for, we all bill or we all allocate funds by month, you know, we budget by month, we don't budget by two months, so that every two month bill is just a, it's wonky. Secondly, a leak can only go on for a month. Right now, if a leak starts, let's say 75% of the way through this billing period, then we've got 25% of a billing period there, 15 days where we're leaking. But it's not big enough of an anomaly to really catch anybody's attention. Then it leaks for 60 days and then we got another 10 to 15 days before they get the bill, we now have 90 days of leak, if, in the worst case, before anybody is aware of it. And that's what monthly billing can help solve. But we've got to have the full systems in place. As you can see, we've got almost $24 million budgeted for that, it's budgeted, it's approved, it's appropriated and we're starting that process already, we're actually already engaged in the process. It's going to take us about three years to get there. Ultimately, and this would be the last phase, we want to get a customer dashboard up to where they can see what their readings are and they can get those live readings. And then we can send out messages to their customers, we can have it, they can set it to automatically send messages when there's something anomalous. Because frankly, if a household has a constant reading of three gallons a minute, there's a problem. I wish I could tell my customers now, but I'd only know when we read the meters. We've got to have the smarter meters in place before we can do that. But that is our objective, like I said, it's funded, it's just taking all of the time to get there. And right now, the delivery time, again, on smart meters, we're getting a small batch in and we placed the first order for them last summer. That's the plan for the future to help our customers and by reducing the impact of these problems. And with that, I'm happy to answer your question. And if you want to stop my one-on-one and look at my meter up close and personal, it would be my pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bond?
Mr. Jurgens, thank you for your presentation. For the smart meters, you said you've got a first batch that you've already ordered, they've come in, you've installed them yet? Have you?
So for residential reader, residential meters, we've ordered them, they won't be in until late summer.
Okay. So you're saying, you're hoping within three years that the city will be all smart metered?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How do we handle a phone call or a citizen concern? Say for instance, you get a phone call and said, hey, I've had two, three plumbers come out to my house, they're absolutely positive, there's absolutely no leaks, but I'm still getting the $8, $9,000 water bill. What's, what's the next step?
First of all, the, the first step is always see if they've talked to us, have them talk to us. There are several specific cases recently in the last six weeks where one, a customer had a leak, they hired a plumber to, who fixed the leak, then they checked their system and had no leaks, good business. But the statement that they had no leaks occurred after they repaired, replaced parts of their system and then they confirmed that they had no leaks, submitted an adjustment to us based on the repairs that were made, we've seen a couple of those, where there were repairs made, there were flappers replaced, they didn't check to see if the flappers were working in one case, I talked to the, or my deputy talked to the plumber herself and the plumber said, I replaced all three flappers in the, in the, in each bathroom, each bath, each flapper in each bathroom, you know what I mean? Because they were at end of life. But he didn't check to see if they were leaking, he simply said he replaced them because they were at end of life. After that action, the bill went back to exactly normal. So the water goes through the meter, where it goes after that, I honestly do not know and it's not my business to know. I can give you a myriad of examples that would take way too long here tonight, but, so make sure they talk to us and we will work with them in every way that we can to try to, try to help go through exactly what I've just described, help figure out what's, what's happening. Look at the meter, if they want us to test the meter, we're happy to test the meter, we'll schedule that, they can come watch us test it. So we'll go through that entire process that I've just described in the presentation.
Okay. So your goal, if everything works out, you get the supply of the new meters, the smart meters, you're hoping within three years that we will be?
I'm hoping within three years that we will have smart meters in the ground and we have 70,000 water meters, just to put it in context, that's a whole darn bunch of meters.
Yeah, it is.
And at 300 bucks a pop, it's a lot of money. So it's, 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 it's not an instant process and frankly, the supply chain couldn't keep up with it right now anyway.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Jurgens, when we have a high bill and Public Utilities goes out to read the meter, are we notifying the customer at the time that we have that high bill that Public Utilities has been notified about? Or even when we're reading the meter and say it reads correctly, are we still notifying the customer or is the first time they're notified when they get their bill? Because I understand times have the essence with leaks and even those days in between could be crucial.
When we do a reread, we leave a door tag, if it's, if it, if it looks like that there, there is high consumption, we also leave a door tag, that's what those supervisors do at that time when they do that reread.
And does that door tag indicate there's been a high consumption?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I got one question. Mr. Jurgens, if you would, stick around after the work session, I'd like to get a closer look at that meter.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jurgens, thank you so much for the presentations there.
Mr. Jurgens, thank you so much for the presentation, sir. Like you, we've all been getting increased number of emails, phone calls from residents concerned about high water bills, so this is a very crucial time that we're able to educate our constituents about the water situation, let's say. Given the fact that we have about a three-year time period between going from the old meters to the smart meters, or what you said, is it possible to maybe send out notices periodically to citizens, maybe an FYI on the 12 reasons why that you presented to us, so that they can, it can be a top of mind for them to continue to check these things?
Yes, sir, absolutely. And I've already been discussing, because we have a spike in conversation about high water bills, Public Communications and I are, we're gonna have several sequences of shows, talking about analyzing, looking at toilets, taking them apart, playing with the hardware, showing them the meter, and going through some education, and then on a recurring basis, we will air that. It's available, it'll be available on our website, and then also through the government channel. And I'll check and see if, honestly, bill flyers are generally just trash. When you send them out, I've, people just don't, if you get a paper bill, do you look at all the plop outs that come out of your paper bills? Most people do not. They are very ineffective at communicating with our customers. I can do that, but for the cost, there's just not a lot of bang for the buck. However, I mean, the first week of February, I'm gonna meet with all of my counterparts from the region, with all the other directors of utilities, and we've already proposed putting this conversation on our agenda to increase our public awareness through HRPDC to the entire region so that we can have this conversation and have this education, not just be a Chesapeake conversation, but a regional conversation, and then we'll use HRPDC assets to get communications out on a recurring basis. And they will occasionally do TV spots, radio ads, et cetera, to get, reminder, check for this, this, and this, to help our customers.
Okay. So, some of the phone calls I've received, I'm going to tell you something, as I'm hearing it, you can respond to them, please. One of the main questions I get is, or one of the main level of communications I get is citizens saying, "There's work being done on my street, therefore, that contributed to my high water bill." Could you respond to that?
Absolutely. So, work being done on the street doesn't push water through the meter, it has to come out somewhere on the house system. Work being done on the street doesn't cause water to flow through this meter and cause this mutating disc to spin. Now, if somebody is doing work, if a utility company is doing work on the customer's side of the meter, which frankly, all the franchise utilities are located on the customer's side of the meter, and they hit a water line, the customer's water service line, then they can cause a leak. They can cause a large one. If it happens just wrong and they're directional drill, we really don't like directional drillers because they hit our stuff more often sewer lines and water, but if they nick it, they can cause a leak in the customer's water system. We have, we are not a party to any of that action. That is an issue between the customer and the utility that hit them. We are happy to be the honest broker conversation and talk to both parties, but that is truly an issue between the entity that caused the damage and the entity that owns the pipe that was damaged. So, the city is not a party to that transaction, if you will.
Okay.
So, but if there's work happening on my water system or on the sewer system in the street, that does not cause any water to flow through the meter and does not cause a high bill.
Cool. And can you talk briefly the difference between the smart meters and the old meters, the old meter readers?
So, these meters, they are physical meters where this mutating disc spins around in circles. The smarter meters will be an open port, they're an ultrasonic-type meter that won't have this moving part. They will have a battery, they are designed to be able to be read by radio or by a tower and send signals upon request or on a scheduled basis back to whatever is requesting, wherever captures that data. Right now, on the meters we're putting in on the commercial side, it is pinged by our vehicle, by the radio system and computer system in our vehicle that sends out a signal requesting the data from the meter, and then we capture that meter data when it's sent that way.
Yeah. And lastly, if supply chain situation changes and you are able to get more smart readers at a faster rate, could you please let us know? It may be something we can consider assisting to speed up that three-year timeline for citizens.
Yes, sir. The faster we can make this happen, trust me, the happier I'll be, happier all of my people will be. We wanna help solve this as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Redder?
If there is anybody who hasn't had a chance, okay. I've got just a few questions and a couple comments. Number one, when we hear from folks, we always hear about the leak tablets. So, in your presentation, did I misunderstand that those tablets or coloring don't always indicate whether or not there's a leak, or maybe it's not a leak, maybe it's a malfunction in your flapper? A term I have just learned recently.
So, if, when you put those tablets in your toilet tank and water, and the dye comes out in the bowl, there's 100% certainty that there is a leak between going down through the tank to the bowl. So, at that point, you're 100% certain that there's a leak. If you put the dye in the tank and it doesn't come out in the bowl, all you can be certain of is that at that moment, the flapper isn't leaking. That doesn't mean it doesn't leak before or after, but you know that at that moment, it's an instant in time that it's not leaking. If you have a flapper that leaks all the time, it's easy to tell. If you have one that leaks intermittently, it'll be a lower volume, but it won't be 100% certain that there is, that there is not a leak at some time, just because the flapper seats perfectly that time.
Do I recall correctly that you gave a five-minute window and there was a 30-second?
Yes, ma'am. And I had actually timed that at my house with one toilet leak, but it can be more or less depending on how well the flapper is seating. Sometimes it'll happen every minute that it refills, sometimes it'll happen every 15 minutes.
Okay, so, I wanna do this super respectfully, because I know you're on the hot seat with all this, and I know some of it is not 100% predictable. But it, I think people who are experiencing high bills put a lot of confidence in the fact that when they use those tablets, you expect 100% accuracy. So, that would be part of my usual discussion on effective means of communication. People, I mean, every person I've heard from has said, you know, "I had the tablets dropped off, but we didn't have a leak." So, this is the first time that I understand that there's, there could be a time element and a circumstance element. I'm just gonna go through these pretty quickly. Secondarily, some of the folks have not indicated that they received a high-consumption letter prior to the receipt of their bill. And, you know, we can mail those, the mail is consistently inconsistent these days. So, you know, I wanna be sure that those letters actually are going out, that it's not a door tag.
So...
A door tag is not a mailed letter.
That's correct. A door tag is something my staff member sticks to the door, hangs on the doorknob when they are physically out there. So, in order to test my system, my, our process, when I knew I was gonna have a high bill, I didn't tell anybody. I wanted to find out if the system kicked it out and if it got processed correctly.
The secret shopper.
Well, exactly, yes, ma'am. And the first time, one of my staff members came walking it down the hall to me and said, "Do you realize you had high consumption?" And they were kind of afraid to tell me. And then the second time, they came and said, "Do you want us to hand you your letter?" I said, "No, I would actually like it to go through the mail. I wanna see how the timing on the process works out so that I can experience it just like a normal customer." And both of those times, it worked. Can I guarantee that we're perfect? We're not perfect. Is it possible we might miss a letter here and there? Yes, ma'am. I'm not gonna ever claim perfection on my part, but I know we do the very best we can, and our standards are very high.
Okay. And then also, in terms of communication, and I realize the time is fleeting here, when folks are contacting you because there is utility work, particularly with that cable, anything working in a easement for property, there's got to be a way that it can be clear that that could be an issue, and maybe we need, I know we cannot interfere between the entities, but maybe there should be some sort of notification, you know, the utility, not your utilities, but other utilities are historically not good about notifying people that there's gonna be work in their easement. So, maybe we need to work on that a little bit better. I think I'm gonna have some other questions, but I know that we're very short on time here, so let me go to the communication piece. This always concerns me. So, I'm gonna use my home as an example. You can do all the TV shows you want, you can put it on the website, and my husband's never gonna see that. But if a small piece of paper comes in the bill, and we don't have sewer service where we live, so we only get a water bill, he always sees that. If, he handed it to me when we got it in December and said, "The rates are going up," as if I was unaware. So, I would take issue that people do see inserts in bills. And, you know, other than during college basketball season, which happens to be now, he may be watching, but not if there's a game on. So, he's not gonna see a TV show, he's not gonna go to the website and do 14 clicks to get to this explanation. He's gonna want to have something he sees him writing. So, we need to kinda test out with people how they best receive communication, and I'll probably have some other questions, and thank you, this was very good.
Thank you, Ms. Redder.